What's, um, is there an?
and adopt the agenda. If we could all stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, this is our regular, uh, school board business meeting, so, um, because of that, the only time for comments from the audience, uh, would be now. So if anyone has any comments, um, or on their current agenda, or if they have any items for future consideration, now would be the time to come up to the microphone. Alright, I don't see anybody running up to the microphone. So then, let's move on to number four, the consent agenda. For A, approval of use of seclusion and physical restraint policy; B, approval of Edgerton and Hills Corners Elementary Parent Handbook; C, approval of Holtz Foundation Grant for the Black Party; D, approval of Halis Construction Donation for Black Party; E, approval of Fourth Quarter 2011/12 Financial Report; F, approval of 2012/13 Preliminary Budget; G, approval of Food Service Contract; H, approval of New Hires; I, approval of July 23, 2012, and August 13, 2012 School Board Minutes; J, approval of August Vouchers and Vouchers Payable; K, approval of Bid for Gymnasium Sound System; L, approval of Staff Handbook; and M, approval of East-West Connection Donation for Black Party. Would anyone like to remove something from the consent agenda?
I would.
Item K?
I'd like to put A.
Move A. Okay. TJ?
Um, C, D, and F.
Bernie, anything?
Nope, we've covered everything.
Okay, well then, I will entertain a motion to approve B, E, G, H, I, J, and L. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve B, E, G, H, I, J, and L on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, uh, TJ, let's do C.
I can do mine, C, D, together.
Okay, C and D together.
Yep. Um, first of all, thank you, Holtz, thank you, Halis. Um, I'm just trying to get a clarification. The Black Party, is that a sanctioned Whitman School District function? Dr. Holtz?
Um, it was for the 50th. Now it's kinda like a cooperation between the committee and the district. Is that... Can you shed more light on it than that? I don't know.
I didn't know that we had to get sanctioned thereafter. Uh, I believe, last year I was a coach here with Mike, and we brought it in front of this board, I believe, to make it an annual event, and that's what it's been.
My only concerns are the liability issues for the Black Party. Um, is that something that we as a district are absorbing the liabilities, or is the separate Black Party Committee absorbing, or how's that working? So I guess, I'm all in favor of the Black Party. I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way, and if we're doing it as part of the district. Or are we gonna treat it as, like, the Booster Club? The Band Boosters, the Foundation? How are we gonna treat that? And that's what my point of clarification is really about.
We don't have a rider, a special rider, I don't believe, do we?
I was just about to ask whether the, the Black Party group has taken out insurance. The school district has liability coverage for itself. In fact, uh, earlier, when the idea of the dunk tank came up, for example, I got in touch with our insurance company to see whether they'd sanction something like that. They said there was no problem with it. So, I don't know whether there's a separate organization that has taken out insurance for themselves.
There is not.
When we got the, um, the laser tag people, they had to show their...
Certificate of Insurance.
Certificate of Insurance. Yeah. So, yeah, we just need to clarify it, and, um, every year, probably, just...
Well, that's...
When I apply for the carnival license through the city, we use our district certificate of liability insurance for that. Because they request it.
Then, then that just opens up another question for me, is, then if it's a district-sponsored function, where are all the proceeds? Where is the accountability? Where is all the accounting going to?
Mike, why don't you come up to the microphone?
Do you mean, does that make sense?
Yes, all of the money is actually being funneled through our, um, district office here. Any money that we receive in terms of, like, cash sponsorships are all turned in through our, um, accounting office here.
And I have, uh, spreadsheets for the last two years, for all the accounting of all the money going in and out, in my, on my computer. I can be happy to forward them to anybody.
Then I guess...
But Debbie Jones also keeps track of our finances here for us, too.
Okay, so then, then that's, I mean, the reason I'm bringing it up is I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, the two that I pulled off. But I think we need to have further discussion then, and, and set it up, either as a separate 503B, like we do the charter, you know, the foundation, or the booster, or we're gonna run it as a club. Do you, I guess I want more clarification as to how, how it's affecting everything, how it's all fitting together. Okay? So I'm happy you guys are doing it, congratulations. I think it's an awesome thing. I just wanna make sure we're covered, if we're gonna use a district responsibility.
So, have we, so have we ran it in the black for the last two years? So, is it a net profit?
It is. The first year was kind of, the first year we thought it was a profit, and then we realized that the agreement that the previous superintendent had with a marketing person took all the money. Not legally, not rightly, but legally.
So then what do we do with the profit? What is it allocated for?
All the proceeds benefit the Fine Arts Programs in our school district. Um, I know last year it went to that group as well, and the proceeds were used to buy equipment for each of those departments.
All four schools got just under a thousand dollars last year.
For Fine Arts?
Yes.
So then, you change that every year, to, is it, is it one year it's gonna go to Fine Arts, next year it's gonna go to this, or whatever?
Well, we always bring that question up to administration every year, and they kinda help make that decision for us.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, obviously, we can get, you know, support as we have from Holtz and Halis. I mean, I think it's great, as long as we have our liability covered. That's our main thing. I'd hate to see somebody slipping and fall out there and then sue the district for something that's not covered under our policy.
Yeah, so I, I think, I don't know if that would fall under a finance committee, under a policy committee, or something, but it's something we should have further discussion on.
We have to get a rider, can we do that, Doug? Sure, we can do that. Um, I'll check, is, our policy, I know, provides, uh, protection for, um, volunteer groups, PTA's, things like that, but I'll do a little research tomorrow, see if we can narrow it down, and if necessary, we can get a rider out before then.
Okay.
And then, from every vendor that you get certificates from, then the district needs to be listed as additional insured on all those certificates for that event. And you can limit it to this, that one day, so that they're not carrying an additional insured on their policy for longer than a day. But that, that would cover us as well. That would limit our liability on some of those special events that are run by another vendor.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Well done. Thanks, Quinn. A motion to approve C and D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve C and D on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, TJ, I'm gonna skip F, I'll leave that to last.
Oh gee, thanks.
Uh, we'll move down to K, uh, approval of bid for gymnasium sound system. Stephanie?
Thank you. Um, I was just looking at the two, and you had made a recommendation to accept one over the other, and I was just curious as to why, if there was any other reasoning besides cost, that one was less expensive than the other?
I did not make a recommendation.
Here, here.
There's a recommendation on there.
See, if you give me the cover sheet to do, you gotta read it.
I thought, uh, I, I, and actually, a lot of it hit follow the doctor Holtz, even though I was out last week. I really just wanted to bring, I had sent out my bid for the sound system, and I received it back. Um, I have worked to make a recommendation. It would be based on the money, it would be based on, uh, one of the companies that is, um, pretty involved in our community, and, uh, they are as reputable as the other.
Is that Miles?
Yeah.
Oh, so they, aren't they, um, graduates of Whitman School System, many of them?
That's, the, the two gentlemen that I worked with, yes, they were, I didn't do too much of a lot with them, but I definitely was happy that they were putting up a deal for us on that.
The only thing I didn't see from there was a final bid number.
Just had to add 'em up. There's, there's three.
That's what I saw, three.
It's like three hundred dollars. Between the three companies, if I add them up, um, it would be around three hundred dollars.
Win-win. And, and so that's why you recommended the, um, the local company?
Yeah.
Cause we, if, if it's within dollars, and actually, if this is the low bid, we try to support our local businesses.
I was sending Dr. Holtz things on my cell phone. He promised me that I'd show up this morning, so I grabbed it and I was like, "Oh, again, a lot of it's all from the children, but I was absolutely happy that they were putting up a deal for us on that."
The only thing I didn't see from there was a final bid number.
Just had to add 'em up. There's, there's three.
That's what I saw, three.
It's like three hundred dollars. Between the three companies, if I add them up, um, it would be around three hundred dollars.
Win-win. And, and so that's why you recommended the, um, the local company?
Yeah.
Cause we, if, if it's within dollars, and actually, if this is the low bid, we try to support our local businesses.
I was sending Dr. Holtz things on my cell phone. He promised me that I'd show up this morning, so I grabbed it and I was like, "Oh, again, a lot of it's all from the children, but I was absolutely happy that they were putting up a deal for us on that."
What's the timeline?
Like, to start immediately is really good.
So you did recommend Miles Pro Audio?
Yes.
Good job, Rick.
Yep, that's fine. It's good.
You're fine. You're fine. You're just coming back wins like we had Friday night.
Are you good?
Anything else, Stephanie?
Nope, that was it, okay.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the bid for Gymnasium Sound System, Two Miles Pro Audio. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, and then, we have, um, letter M, approval of East-West Connection Donation for Black Party. That would be Quinn.
Mike?
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you.
So, um, this is also a returning presenting sponsor for us for the Black Party this year. This is Jan Schreter of East-West Connection Martial Arts Studio on Highway 100 and Hills Corners, and, um, she is going to hand over a donation tonight, or a check for a thousand dollars.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, um, also, um, Jan and her husband, Dan, also had a meeting with Dr. Holtz earlier this month about possibly starting a program in, in, on our early release days, or, or grade schools, so I hope you...
I haven't gone any further, I haven't been, so I think we're probably working on that.
Yeah, we had it at our last academy meeting, cause it, it's a bullying program, anti-bullying, character education type of program that her and her husband put together, and it looks pretty sound from an educational standpoint. So Lynn is bouncing it off of, uh, teachers at the middle school, and that would be the, the perfect fit right now.
The target would be the middle school?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for the donation.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you for the donation.
Thank you.
Don't give it to Mike, he won't get over here.
You can hand it to Doug, Mr. Johnson up here.
Everybody wants it.
Money drives them crazy.
This is the second year we're doing this, and I think it's worth it, and we have a lot of fun at the Black Party, so thank you again for letting us do this.
Do you do demonstration, demonstrations throughout the Black Party?
And we'll be, we'll be doing yoga this year, too, so kinda get everybody involved, a lot into the safety issues, um, for the children. Hopefully, everybody seems up to their task, and hopefully, they'll really enjoy the experience.
So teach, do you teach adult classes as well?
Oh, yes.
So this is just a great example here of the school-community partnership that we're really trying to strive for here.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Motion to approve M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the East-West Connection Donation for the Black Party. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. Okay, TJ, we'll go back to letter F, approval of 2012/13 Preliminary Budget.
I just, I brought it off for specific, just to, um, just go over the fact that we went through this, the last finance facilities meeting for a couple hours, and if there was any other final questions that any board members had before we accept the preliminary budget.
And our preliminary tax levy is?
Zero.
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 Zero increase, not a...
Stain of last year.
Zero increase in our tax levy.
No, it's not the same as last year.
It was not.
So with that, I, no questions, I'm motion to approve the, for the preliminary budget.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2012/13 Preliminary Budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. Moving right along, to number five, Old Business Staffing Update.
Okay, I'll actually give that over to Joel, because he's been working right up until the meeting, with interviewing, and getting these approved.
It's been a very interesting weekend. I'm happy to say that we've accepted just about every offer we've put out. I'm happy to accept, or we offer a position where this person works at a higher raise, so it's worked out the way they work out. We're actually in very good shape. We're in process right now with speech learning with our colleges. We want to return to that. A school nurse has an offer pending, um, auditorium, auditorium manager substitute. There's an issue that DPI has to resolve for us, and they were supposed to resolve it today. The person who does that is out, and I would hold it for a while, too. It's not a negative, it's just something that I wanna have to improve so that I can be a strong, really reliable person. Our tech ed teacher, we've had gentlemen come out, look at it, and thought, "This is a very large responsibility," and it popped out. We had another woman that we talked through yesterday and today about, um, living in Sepp, and both of them have been doing a marvelous job. All the principals have been in Sepp, and they're obviously doing marvelous work, following up on this new subcut. And you've seen a number of offers and higher recommendations we've been activating.
I just wanna jump on that. Um, the tech ed was a question last time, and Lynn actually came up with a great idea to post it on Stout's website for the December grads, um, because what we're looking at now is, we can't, she went, she did that part of it. Joel went and looked for all the people that were available that had done it in the past, that we could use as a substitute, um, you know, long-term substitute. And so, um, we're, we're getting close on that.
We've got, the one who's in today, the one who turned us down, and the one that's ready to hear back from our all high school end or middle school experience, tech ed teachers, um, who have retired recently, and trying to work with them to fill the schedule, and there may be some job sharing possibilities there. We're gonna be a little creative, we're gonna do the best possible to match what we've got.
Didn't, uh, this, what did the governor just sign?
I'm sorry?
Didn't the governor just sign some new, or just proposed legislation to allow this, the tech ed programs and all the other ones, for you to bring in people?
Yeah, there's, there's something going on all over the country, especially Midwest, where there are tremendous people, very talented people, who do not have all of the teacher education backgrounds, and have really done the job. And so, you know, such as somebody who's done it well for twenty years, and maybe get a classroom as well, as somebody who's never been in the job site, you know, I think so. If you're a teacher, you're a teacher, you're a man who's done, uh, you're a person who has the experience in the industry, and you're bringing that into your, kind of, reach of our children, and that's the best of what works. So, there's one. There's a provision of a patient certification.
Isn't that what he just signed, or?
Yeah, they, they did just sign something last week or the week before.
Right.
What it, what isn't in place is the structure around it. So DPI hasn't formalized how it's gonna work, and the colleges, um, when you call the colleges, they go, "They're supposed to do what?"
Yeah, that's why, okay, cause...
There's, there's, uh, the president said most states, where if you had, depending on what is your teaching level, if you work in a field of eight thousand dollars, basically four years, and you have a college degree of any sort, then you can get a program for a certification, and you can teach for a period of time, and then you have to start a new program, and get some of the teacher edge access. Other states allow people who have no college, but fifteen thousand dollars, and you're coming to teach through. So I have to go through all the processes, and you still have to come back and take other courses. So it's working, bringing in a lot of people, and it's good.
So, is that gonna be, obviously, it's not gonna be fully in effect for the school year?
No.
Especially through DPI?
You know, and again, there's, there's emergency provisions. Part of what I'm talking to DPI is, what else can we do? Um, if there's something they're gonna do applicants, and all the files available, and if it's great, then we can do whatever it takes, and we're at it. We have to show documentation, and have your files, and just break down the line, and we can check all the files.
So, so, school's gonna start in?
A week.
A week? So what's gonna happen to the kids that have signed up for this class?
There'll be somebody there.
Okay.
What I'm, well, you know, the, the issue is...
If it's you, right, somebody will be there.
See, the, the, the grand plan is that they'll know, and I'll carry all those certifications. I'm not licensed to stop people, so, thank you, but, help out, alright? I'm glad to know you're someone. Any other questions?
Well, we will have somebody there.
There will be somebody there, even if it is, yes.
Okay.
No, no, I... Anybody else?
Yep, thank you. Alright, number six, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. Anything? Okay. Number seven, board member announcements. Any announcements?
Well, the field is up and running, cause soccer was out there today, and JV football was there last week, and Thursday. And the sound system sounds great.
And we have the tailgate party and field opening on September 7, Black Party on September 8.
Um, the, the grand opening for any board members that are interested, I know that the time is designed mostly for students, but if you wanna put an order in for the size shirt and the tailgate, um, at ten dollar feet, um, contact Kathy, and we'll coordinate it through Rick, which is sometimes a challenge, because when the baby's up, he's there, he's sometimes here at two in the morning. Um, so, but we will get it, uh, so that yours is all taken care of. Um, just let Kathy know if you're going to come and you want the, the t-shirt and the ten dollar tailgate thing. I think we all got invited. Is there a scheduled event? Kind of, on that date?
For the Black Party?
No, no, not for the Black Party, for the grand opening.
That's on the website.
Yes, there is, yeah, but I don't think they made it public, and I don't think it was in the invitation.
No, it wasn't.
No, but I've seen it, including a ceremonial coin toss. Did you care about that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll have to come and cheer on the coin tosser.
Yeah. It's you and I.
Are we gonna recognize, cause I, I would suspect there'll be some alumni, uh, kids in the audience. Are we gonna do anything special to recognize them, or stand up, or tell them that you're on the field?
I don't think there will be that many there, because school started, and we're probably a couple weeks late for that.
Do we, I guess, Mike?
I believe some are coming back.
Are they?
Yeah. Joel Stavi won't be here, but, um, there are others that I believe are coming back, so...
What about, uh, like, the, the schedule, what's the itinerary?
Could you email that to us, maybe?
Yeah, you wanna check with Jackie and see what they find, and...
Yeah, what time?
That'd be great.
We all need to be there specifically.
That's on the invite, but...
But I mean, we, well, here's the reason I ask, is because I also have an event at Summerfest that day. So, I'm gonna have to duck out of Summerfest, come here, and then go back down to Summerfest, so I can just...
Let's know when.
Exactly.
And we might need to make sure we send it out to those, um, officials, too. Are we gonna recognize, cause I would suspect there'll be some alumni, kids in the audience, are we gonna do anything special to recognize them?
Stand up.
Or stand up, or tell them to join us on the field?
I don't think there will be that many there, because...
As a college?
School started, and we're probably a couple weeks late for that.
Do we, I guess...
I've heard some are coming back.
Are they?
Yes. Well, Joel Stavi will be here, but, there are others that I've heard that come back, so...
What about, like, the, the schedule, what's the itinerary?
Could you email that to us, maybe?
Yeah, you wanna check with Jackie and Sue to find it.
Yeah, what time?
That'd be great.
We all need to be there specifically.
That's on the invite, but...
But I mean, well, here's the reason I ask, is because I also have an event at Summerfest that day, so I'm gonna have to duck out of Summerfest, come here, and then go back down to Summerfest, so I can just... Exactly.
And we might need to make sure we send it out to those officials, too.
What is expected of us?
Standing with thirty.
Be sunshiny, and happy.
Well, I, I think that we need to invite Bill and Mike, cause they're part of this board when that decision was made, they were part of the whole process. I don't really feel, that I, I was not, not part of that process. I understand I'm on this board now, but they were part of putting a hand up and going through the motions and doing it, and I would hope they would be recognized or asked to be on the, on the field.
We'll confirm and make sure that that was sent out.
I, I guess I'd go even one step further, I mean, board members that we think might be in the audience, they're the ones through the budget process that have been able, for us to be able to do this. You know, the Rick Koofs and Ross Keskes of the world, you know, they are the ones that recognize the importance of billing a strong reserve fund for future, so, I know Rick Koof's gonna be there, so...
What about the committee that was, I think they are...
They're, they're, they're on the...
I think, are we gonna, I guess my question is, what acknowledgement are we gonna do?
Yeah.
You know, that's really what my question is. Is what acknowledgement for all of that? And is there an NC for this?
Did we get Jay Miller, or did what happened?
We contacted him. We worked on that, and the, the backup was, I couldn't think of his name at our meeting with Dan and Donnelly, we're working on it. And so, this week is our Teacher in Service, the School for Teachers, but towards Wednesday, Thursday, we should be able to get some of that stuff out through Jackie and over to Rick.
Okay, so if you could email us, that would be great, and if you have any other, any other suggestions to email, Lo.
And I do know there are, there's gonna be lots of former board members there, too, so I like that idea of, like Bernie said, recognizing that they put us in a good position.
All right. Then, number eight, motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851C to discuss administrative contracts. Eileen?
Yes.
TJ?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned to closed session.